At 4:02, we are now in session for...
5:02.
5:02, sorry.
Would you mind taking your mask off for me?
Yeah, yeah.
I can hear better.
5:02, we are now in session for the workshop. And we've come to consider and possible action regarding the employee appreciation event. Ms. Iker, do you want to lead us out?
I will be happy to do that. We have hamburgers. HEB is going to provide those for us and give us a $200 discount on that. I think, where is Kim? There she is. Do you want to tell us a little bit about our numbers?
Yes. So we have a total of 261 signed up. We have 97 on Wednesday. We have 51 on Thursday. And 113 on Friday. And that includes 37 from K Pub and 224 from the city. Very good turnout.
It's a good turnout.
Okay, good.
So everybody's clear, the dates are?
The dates are the 24th, 25th, 26th. Lunch on 24th, dinner on 25th, and lunch on 26th.
That's correct.
One of the good things about that is that spring comes on the 20th.
That's good. That's good. We've ordered good weather, so... So our numbers are really going to be more like 300 rather than the 400 we originally had talked about. And so Brenda has gotten some things?
Yes, Mayfield is going to be donating the Styrofoam to-go boxes for the sandwiches. And Mrs. Bear is just going to be donating the bones and...
Oh, nice.
Good job, Brenda.
That's great.
Very good.
And then, I think we're... I don't think our banks are going to come through in talking, from what I've understood. Gary, you want to?
Yeah, it's not kind of what they do. And it's not just the banks, it's some of the cooking teams. And I talked to them. And it's middle of the week, it's middle of the day. They're working people, so it's hard for them to take off. Their pits are really smoking pits, not barbecue pits. And so that presents a problem. So I have not done formal approaches to some of our banking institutions for its donations. I was kind of waiting to hear what our total cost was going to be. But I think we can get whatever, if there is a cost, and we can get that covered very easily. They're agreeable. But I was waiting to kind of figure out what that number was before I approached them.
Yeah, and in fact, I went to... I knew that Gary, since we're kind of teaming up on this, I knew Gary was going to talk to the bank. And I had went in on a different personal matter and also saw Kenneth today. And I did tell him, after he explained to me what Gary just said, I asked him if we could consider, if the bank was going to consider a financial donation. He said absolutely. So I think at this point, it sounds like that's the direction.
Yeah, I think if we...
Not just the banks, just people. People that want to donate.
Yes.
Sure, whoever. But I'm just saying, if you can get us some sort of a cost number, whatever y'all think that might be, then I can get the money. Kim and I can get that money raised. I don't think there's going to be any cost to the city.
Well, I've got... George has said he will head up getting volunteers to cook hamburgers. And we'll get grills and...
Lizzie's got a pit, hamburger pit.
Hamburger pit?
Yeah. It's specifically for hamburgers.
Oh, perfect.
So it's parked right in the corner of the building. If you guys want to use that, you're more than welcome to.
That'd be great, so...
Okay.
If they need his help, he would also help.
Okay.
Thank you, Brenda.
That's great, thank you. And so we'll have volunteers to do that.
Is George going to be picking up the meat and the lettuce and tomatoes and onions, or...?
We'll talk about that. HEB will keep for us the hamburgers and we can just get what we need per day. So we'll get the first day, we'll get the second day, the third day. And they'll keep them cold for us.
Okay.
And that's just the hamburger meat.
Yes.
Still need, because I can go to Wiley and I can probably get donations for tomatoes and lettuce from the produce place.
From the produce place?
And onion.
Okay. All right.
So I'll put that on...
All right, you're hired. Okay, that's great. And then I understand that there are tables there?
Yes.
So we just need to unlock and we'll get volunteers to help set them out and...
Yeah, if you know how many, Ashley said that her people can get them out for you. If you know about how many, if you need five, six.
Part of this is thanking them, so I kind of hate to ask them to do that. So we'll see. If we've got enough volunteers to do it, we won't worry about it.
Okay.
But we'll check with her then, okay? All right. And, okay. I would like, if we had enough money, I would like to be able to also put in there some coleslaw. If we could have a little container of coleslaw.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
In addition to chips, coleslaw, hamburger, and we talked about a brownie. I will arrange that and we'll... And we should have enough money to do that, so...
Yeah, if you'll just let us know what it's going to cost.
How much we need, okay. Okay.
I'll guarantee it one way or the other, outside.
Okay, all right. You're on, okay. And we need a banner, we need to decide what it's going to say.
What do you want it to say? I'm going to take care of that with you.
Kim is going to take care of that?
Gary said he would too, so either way.
Okay, Gary and I together?
Okay, okay.
Whatever. Okay, we'll take care of that part. Do you, I mean, do you want to specify the wording? Or do you want to just leave it up to us? I just don't want you to see it and think that it's not what you wanted.
Just run the text, Mark.
No, I think if...
If there's going to be any sponsorships, I mean, you guys, you know, if any of the banks are going to sponsor, you're going to know who they're going to be. I can just...
Just run with it, okay.
If we don't know, we just put a big, you know, "thank you," "we appreciate you."
Okay.
You know, something like that.
All right.
Okay, we'll figure out some wording that I buy you.
Okay.
Just, I mean, fruit packets and mayonnaise packets and...
Oh, yeah, no, 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 just... I mean, we do that kind of stuff all the time. Just the banks that give money, okay? I don't think we...
No, no, I'm saying...
Just the actual getting...
Yeah, I'm just kind of shifting gears.
Oh, procuring them?
Procuring, yes.
Yeah, let me add it to my list, because it's so easy to get and it's real cheap.
No, again, I don't care what it costs particularly. I just want to make sure that we're going to have all that.
That we'll have it, yeah.
So that also means then we're going to need the disposable dinner packets?
We will, if we have, yeah, if we do the coleslaw.
Kim, I know this is not your, I know it's Parks, but I assume we're going to have trash receptacles and liners?
Yes.
There onsite?
Yes.
Okay.
And there, I don't know what's... I didn't, when I went up there, I didn't look for trash bags and things. But there's a lot of us that can bring a couple from home too, to help take care of it. Well, no, the...
No, I'm sure that, I'm sure Parks has them, I just...
Yeah, but...
Yeah, we'll make sure they're there.
Thank you.
Okay, you'll get trash bags?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And what are we doing for drinks?
I'm sorry?
Drinks?
Oh.
Now that I haven't, I have not...
I'll take drinks.
Well, we were going to do soft drinks, weren't we? And tea and other things?
I think, I think we're talking about having some kind of big container, ice down with water and soft drinks when they choose.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
So we could buy those from...
I don't have big ice chests like that.
We can get some.
HEB?
We'll do drinks.
What if we bought those from HEB?
Yeah, I'll do drinks.
Okay, okay, Kim?
I'll take care of drinks.
All right.
All right, and I'll get the ice chest and we'll use your truck.
All right. What else? Did that cover everything?
On the dessert, the brownie part, did you, you had mentioned you want to counsel the, are we making? What are you, what are we doing?
I'm not making brownies.
We're not making brownies, so we're not.
So those are being purchased as well?
No, they have, they have a, as far as the good stuff that doesn't taste institutional.
I want good stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, they have like a double chocolate layer brownie that's pre-cut.
Who's this?
Either Performance or Betty Keen, or one of those, one of those that are really, really good. It's what we typically use when people request brownies for weddings and stuff like that. They also have a really good, it's a strawberry shortcake where the, where you've got the cake and the strawberry filling is in the center. And then it's got kind of a whipped frosting type on top. But it's more of a whipped cream, not a, you know, frosting frosting. That's really delicious also.
Does it have to be kept cold?
Um, no. Does not have to be kept cold.
I'd like to make a special request that Gary cooked the brownies.
You were cooking a brownie, is that what you said?
We'll have to cheat. We'll have to cheat and buy some to give you, because I don't think that's going to happen.
I'd say for simplicity, we just go with the brownies.
With the brownies?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, what I was, the point I was trying to make is that the strawberry shortcake is also various. You know, you don't have to squeeze out the strawberries and...
Well, that's my next question. So how are those going to be served? Are they going to be in their own container?
No, 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 we'll have to, we'll have to package each one. Because they'll come on a flat. And then you just, you know, they're scored.
Is that what the volunteers, are we going to be setting up assembly line style? Okay.
Yeah.
So George is going to contact me as a volunteer and say that this is how we're doing it and this is where I need to station?
Well, not so much the volunteer part. He'll take care of having the hamburgers, getting them cooked and do that part.
Okay, so...
I'm going to work on volunteers. But you know, I look at this and say, we've got 15 days.
Why, no, it's right around the corner.
But we can do it.
Yeah, I'm not saying we can't do it.
Well, and I think we should all help with some volunteers. I mean, you know, we put it on Facebook, we do that. We'll have plenty of people to help.
I can probably give Lizzie the volunteer all three days. And, you know, this, this is peanuts to him, these numbers.
This is nothing.
So, so, I mean, you know, 51 people...
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to, it...
In the evening, it's going to be 15 minutes.
I don't know just exactly. We'll probably kind of have to figure out how many we should have with each of the numbers. And then, so that I'm not, I need to think through that a little bit as to, you know, to cut, to cut the tomatoes and...
I don't think you need more than, I think if you get 30 people there, it's going to be a mess.
Yeah.
I think you need 10 people each. I think that's more than enough, in my opinion.
Well, let us work through that and kind of come up with a number of what we think.
Okay, because...
You're saying not more than 30?
I thought the...
I mean, 10 for each day is plenty.
Sliced.
Well, and that's wonderful.
I mean, I'm trying to keep it simple, you know?
But that's, that's a lot of work for your staff when...
For 50 people?
Judy, can I make a suggestion? Rather than continue this, can you and Brenda sit down? Y'all seem to have the better ideas of what's going on. Just organize it and tell us how much money you need.
Tell you how many brownies to make, right?
Even better, why don't we plan on raising $5,000?
That's too much.
Oh, too, yeah.
Then let's plan on raising how much? Because we don't have our number, what...
I don't want to raise $5,000 and we spend two. What do we do with the other three?
We put it in, we can put it in there, we can put it in there.
Yeah, right.
We can put it in their fund, like Amy was talking about. She said we can apply it to their appreciation and events for staff fund. The shirts. For future events that they have designated.
Okay.
Okay, you and I are together.
And if we don't raise enough, we don't raise that much. But I don't know.
Let me ask you this. Either one of us are working with Kim. We need, we need to have some updates along the way on how we're doing on volunteers, what we've already got committed, that kind of thing. It doesn't have to be long, but I think it's important for us.
So when we have a significant update, you're asking that we email Kim so she can blast out an email to council?
Yeah.
We'll let you know by the first next week how much money we've raised.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And how many brownies you're going to make, right?
I've already told you how many brownies.
Do you put nuts in yours or not?
All right, now I got one more question to ask.
Put nuts in some and nuts in none.
Do we require masks for the volunteers?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Masks?
Yes.
And gloves and hairnets.
Oh, and hairnets?
Yes, or baseball caps.
Okay.
So we're going to provide those as well?
No, they can do that themselves.
We can supply the gloves.
The gloves.
We can supply gloves.
Yeah, yeah.
Just latex gloves?
Latex gloves.
And hairnets or basket, or baseball?
Yeah, they have to have their hair restrained.
Yeah.
And in either a baseball cap or a hairnet.
Okay. All right.
But we do not need to certify the food manager.
Okay.
And probably what we should do is, what's today? Today's Tuesday. Let's, let's, we have an update to Kim by Thursday, one up, the first update.
Okay.
That work?
Sure.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, Kim, do you have anything to add or ask?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm not sure.
I'm sure.
What do we decide on the drinks?
I'm going to take care of the drinks.
You're going to take care, okay. Okay, that's, okay, I do have you down.
Where do we get like a big container, horse trough to ice down drinks?
They'll just be in coolers.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay.
I have those.
You do? Okay, I'm getting them from Brenda. See, I figured it out, ma'am.
Is there anything you don't have over there?
She's the expert. Yeah, yeah.
It would be much easier to just argue.
Okay, then, let me ask you, can we move to item 2A?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Do I ask you to read that? And Shelley, do I ask you to read that or shall I read?
You don't have to for a workshop. You don't have to for a workshop. You're not taking any actions.
All right, Quarterly Community Improvement Projects Update.
So Mayor and Council, it's been a while since we provided one of these publicly. We've been giving you copies monthly, but want to make sure that we do a report out. Of course, COVID has put a kink in that in terms of our workshops. But we felt like, since y'all were already having a workshop, we kind of slipped this one in.
Can you bring your mic a little bit closer? I'm sorry, Mark.
I said, since you already had a workshop, then we kind of slipped this one in and so that you could get the briefing and the public could hear it as well. And then, of course, this will always be on our website afterwards. So if, you know, the public wants to see it, it'll be there as well. So we're hoping that we can get through this, that y'all get a, grab a bite. We've got some refreshments upstairs before your 6 o'clock meeting. So with that, EA, you want to go through the report?
Sure. I'm not going to go through every one of these projects, but I'm going to try to hit the highlights, particularly for ones that are pertinent to near-term activity or maybe on some of your upcoming agendas. Just real quickly, I'll go through 1, 2, and 3 in regards to streets, kind of as a group. As you may recall, the slurry seal project is actually a carryover from year 2 slurry seal streets. That will occur from a timing standpoint, really at the end of the fiscal year and that kind of end of September timeframe, once the streets have kind of cooled off and accept that slurry seal a little bit better during that summer heat. 2021 base repair, that will actually occur from a timing standpoint in advance of the slurry seal work, because then they will slurry seal over that, those base repair elements and really lock in that, that street maintenance technique. The 2021 street reconstruction, as you recall, this is continued carryout of the phasing in regards to the 8 million in certificates of obligation that the council authorized some time ago in 2020. And this list of streets includes West Barnett, McFarland, Remshul, Barnett, Wallace, Cottage, and Hillside are all anticipated for reconstruction, assuming we get good bids in. So those will be going into the bidding process here in the next week, a week and a half. We did extend that a little bit, anticipating spring break and folks kind of coming back and getting re-engaged. We want good tight bids. So right now, we're anticipating that being on your council agenda in the mid-April timeframe, probably the April 13th city council meeting.
EA, has the city identified any additional road? I was driving from, I was driving into town, I think it was Banderas Highway, and there's a lot of potholes now. Has there been identified, have there been city streets identified since the storm that may have caused any additional damage to the roads that we'll have to look at going forward?
Yeah, we have done some preliminary analysis. It's mostly been, I mean, obviously, we haven't been able to go through and do a full-blown...
Sure, and that's not a city street, so...
Right.
We just drove it and all of a sudden goes, oh, my gosh.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the storm absolutely had, you know, some detriment to our local street system. A lot of those were on text-out highways, as you mentioned, Banderas Highway. But certainly, we're trying to further assess within the city streets. And we'll, a lot of those we'll be able to address within just our pothole crews and engaging on those. We're starting to need full-blown reconstruction. But absolutely, yeah, we're going to have to continue to assess and see, you know, with those long-term ramifications where that storm set. So we just, it did a number on the infrastructure that we just haven't really seen in the past, given that duration of timeframe.
Anyhow, along that line, just remind our citizens that if they have a pothole on their street, who do they call and what's the process for doing that? Because I know they do a phenomenal job of responding.
Absolutely, so they can call City Hall. The best way to direct in is into Public Works. And they'll talk to probably either Koi first, and then she'll direct them up to them. But they keep a running list and we get that out to our crews and they're able to... We've actually done a lean Six Sigma project on them being able to assess those in a very efficient manner, so...
And I've, I know in the past, when I've called, I've been astounded how quickly they are able to get out there and take care of those. And I know they're swamped right now. But I would encourage the citizens, if they're watching and they've got a pothole, call City Hall and let us know and we'll get someone.
Yeah, they really like to jump on them quick before they continue to grow.
EA, how does text dot look at the Banderas Highway? As far as, do we have any idea?
Yeah, you know, text dot's been pretty swamped across the entirety of their system in various repair elements. We haven't had a specific conversation with them about Banderas Highway, but we certainly will be doing so.
They did respond and do a temporary patch on some of those holes. But it's going to be a dangerous situation very quickly.
It's pretty rough.
Yeah, and it's going to be a while before they can get to all of it. As Councilmember Clarkson said, you know, they're everywhere. And you'll notice too, even on the roads that were recently slurry sealed, if there was a crack, there was a white residue. And that's the base that's come up in the cracks, leaching out because of just the contraction and the, you know, the, and the wear and tear from the ice and the snow. So we're going to see the impacts of that for not just months, but probably a couple of years before we can get to it. And we have filed it for FEMA as an estimate. We did kind of a calculation of what we thought the estimate would be when we were trying to get the disaster declaration. We haven't actually filed for the reimbursement. That would be next and we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Just as a small side note to this list of streets, as you'll see, a lot of these streets are in that Doyle neighborhood area, not necessarily connected to this, but an offset to the work. We are looking at, when we presented this to the Doyle area some months ago and talked through that, there was a strong desire to, not as a street necessarily, but to make a better pedestrian enhancement from the Doyle Center over to the park along Webster. And so we have put together a plan to basically increase the sidewalk along that street in that, in that segment. It was identified within the Doyle Area Plan as a midterm need. We've just accelerated that a little bit to be able to accommodate that need. Most of these, assuming the bids come in well, most of these streets will have pedestrian enhancements as well. In particular, West Barnett and then kind of jutting down Pascal and then coming down McFarland, which again, was identified within the Doyle Area Planning effort. Jumping down, still talking about streets. So this is actually one of the few new street construction. Again, as you recall, EIC partnered with KISD in Shriner to develop Olympic Drive. We handled that contract in the construction contract. We're very near to that. So we are anticipating opening that in mid-March, probably within the next couple of weeks. We're in the process of scheduling the text dot signalization to come out from San Antonio. They have to come out and basically tune the system and make sure it's all ready to go before we activate that. So it may be mid-week next week is what we're anticipating right now. Jumping down a little bit, Clock Tower Elevator. As you've seen, we do have quite a bit of construction going on right there. We pulled some stone back. We're doing some weatherproofing and waterproofing, significant level of enclosure element. We've got the main beams up right now. We're working through a few issues that have been identified with the car itself. But we are hoping to have that completed early to mid-spring. So been a few things as we've uncovered, but we're working through those. So we're confident that we'll have it back up and running for downtown businesses here pretty soon. Library stairs to Tranquility Island. We do get a lot of folks that inquire about this. It is well-used coming off of the trail system and then up to the stairs and vice versa. Really has a nice downtown access point down to the River Trail and Luis Hayes Park itself. We are going through the design engineering effort. That's about approximately 75% complete. We anticipate having that done in the next four to six weeks and then putting that out to bid, hopefully with construction anticipated this summer, as long as we get good bids on that effort. Jumping down, as you may recall from one of your most recent city council meetings, Water, Wastewater Master Planning Effort, we're in the process of kicking that off with Freezer Nichols. Excited to be moving that one forward. As you saw on your council agenda tonight, the Loop 534 Ellenberger Groundwater Well, we got good bids in with a quality bidder that we've worked with in the past. And so again, that is on your council agenda within budget tonight and excited to hopefully be moving that forward, should you approve it. Guadalupe River Utility Crossing. We have been in contact with this contractor. We've worked through the contract issues. They are in the process of gathering materials. They want to make sure they're an out-of-town contractor. They want to make sure that when they mobilize, they can mobilize very quickly and get the project done. It is somewhat complex in the way that, you know, you're basically hanging pipe off the bottom of a bridge. And so that's a, that's a little bit of a complicated process. And so they want to make sure they can hit it with the ground running. So they're getting all the materials assembled now before they fully mobilize. We're hopeful that'll be within the next four to six weeks. We really want this to be up and fully running over this summer timeframe before we get, you know, hot summer season.
Mr. Harvey, just again, remind me that are we still able to pump affluent water?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So both the River Hill and to Comanche Trace are still receiving?
Yes, we have a degree of redundancy. The issue is really that if we had a full request from both entities for everything that we are contractually obligated to send, it would be very difficult for us to do that. And also recall that there are, it is more than just reuse line. There's a water line that is also associated with that. So that helps us again with looping and redundancy over to south, all of the neighborhoods, the south side of the river.
Okay.
Workforce Housing Project at Loop 534. Workforce Housing Project at Loop 534, pleased to let you know that Lennar has submitted a preliminary plat, that's going through the development review process internal to staff right now, it is anticipated, they're gonna get comments back hopefully next week, and that's anticipated for the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting on April 1st, so that is progressing along, got an early look at that this week and things, things look good, so we're excited that, they're very hopeful that they'll be, have rooftops going up in 2021. Flipping over to the next page, River Trail Extension to Shriner University, had a Town and Gown Committee meeting, task force meeting with them last week, they're seeing, you know, good numbers on their campus, they're pleased with, you know, the way the community is trending from a COVID standpoint, and hopefully continues to be so, they're hoping that in the early summer timeframe, we can have an additional ribbon cutting at some point, really for the trailhead, fully open that, that element, and really celebrate the partnership that the city and the university and EIC have been engaged with, so more, more details to come on that, but we are hopeful to hopefully have that fully opened this summer. River Trail to Downtown Concept Study, again, kicked that effort off and progressing that plan, hoping to have some, some early concepts back to you all in the EIC in the early summer timeframe. And then last but not least, two Tex- Dot Partnership Projects, Sydney Baker Bridge enhancements, wanted to let you all know that we did submit a grant application, the Tex- Dot Transportation Alternatives Program, essentially looking at pedestrian enhancements across the Highway 16 Bridge coming out of downtown, crossing the river with better access obviously to Louise Hayes Park, the hospital, the post office, and all those facilities down in that way, Tex- Dot recognizes that, you know, both that existing sidewalk is really not to current standards, as well as, you know, their facility there at 98 and 16 and that intersection, which very much needs improvement down, down the road, in addition to several other sidewalks and gaps in sidewalks in that general vicinity that would greatly enhance pedestrian and ADA access going forward, so we'll keep you all posted as to how that application continues to progress, it is a statewide competitive application, so it is gonna be very competitive, no doubt about that. And the last but not least, Tex- Dot Traffic Signal Synchronization, we actually just had a meeting, webinar with Tex- Dot yesterday, they are continuing to progress with signalization enhancements as far as timing throughout the 16 and 27 corridor, and better timing those elements, as they're able to change out essentially the computer infrastructure that's inside of those, right now it is not communicating with the system which is controlled in San Antonio, and so the, basically the signals aren't necessarily talking to each other, they're working on that.
Will you tell them that my son thinks that there should just be someone watching it and just controlling each one? Because he doesn't understand, he's never seen why someone's not watching that and changing what he needs to go.
There are people that do that in some communities, those are full-time jobs in some places, no doubt about it.
I think he wanted that job maybe or something.
Or if they could just give council members a ticket.
Exactly, exactly, we were excited to hear that this summer they are planning on five full rebuilds of traffic signals in that area to upgrade at 16 and Water, 27 and Water, 27 and Loop 534, 27 in Plaza, and 27 in Woodlawn, so those will be masked arms, new signals, new pedestrian buttons, the full, full nine yards, so it's a pretty big commitment, it's probably somewhere between 1.25 and $2 million worth of Tex- Dot improvement, so.
And that's this year, you said?
It's this summer, starting June, it'll go through June, June through August. Be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
I've got, you may have covered this, I missed it, but the Aquatics Center, that's getting kind of old in terms of feasibility study and so forth, what's the holdup?
Yeah, unfortunately, the pandemic's been the holdup, right? So we had, we basically had that report just about finalized at the beginning of, well, spring of last year, and we're anticipating, you know, basically the public's submittal of that, and the ability to, you know, have some discourse and talk through that from a presentation standpoint, have some open houses, we just weren't able to schedule that, given the pandemic and the level of interaction that we were wanting to do, but it's, you know, it ranged, what the public had garnered for us, it had ranged anywhere from a $2 million to a $12 million improvement at that facility, depending on the scale of what the community really desired and was willing to bite off. I will say, we've identified some significant mechanical challenges over the course of this winter, that we're gonna be coming forth to you all here soon, because we're, we continue to Band-Aid that facility, which is now 50 years old, and we're having difficulty in being able to probably reopen that this summer.
EA, I have to ask about the lowest street drainage, I have people who continually are asking me...
Yes.
What we're doing, when?
Yes, absolutely, we are very near, probably 90-plus percent engineered from our side of it, we are working with Tex- Dot to make sure that what they are gonna do within the bounds of their right-of-way connects and is collaborated on, and so that we're designing in the same manner, and so that may be a longer improvement schedule for them to fix their part, we just want to make sure what we are fixing downstream of their bridge is gonna, gonna work with what they're designing, so we're, we're in those conversations right now.
So we're looking at...
Assuming they give us the green light, we'll go bid the project and we'll, hopefully we could be under construction this summer.
Okay.
For the portion south of 27.
Okay.
Any other questions to the EA? Thank you, it's good to get that update. As I understand it, there is no need for an executive session, okay? Alright, now, I do want to make an appeal that we bring our microphones closer, I appeal that personally, I'm losing some hearing, particularly on the right side, but I think also to make sure that the citizens who are here, hear the comments of the council. Alright, it is 5:37, and we are adjourned for the workshop session.
Thank you.